Yeah, but if you hire somebody to build a building, they build a building, your responsibility is to bring all your stuff over.
The town is...
Yeah, it's not...
All right, we're gonna call the this special January 9th meeting to order. Start by rising to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank everybody for joining us. We snuck this one in so we can close out the budget and warrant articles. It's an early start to our meeting as of 5:30. I'm sure our TV ratings will be hurt by the early start, but maybe people will watch it on demand later. I guess, are we gonna have people had enough time to look at the minutes? They're just from last week. We can always do those next time.
Yeah, do them next time. You haven't seen some of them.
All right, we are not gonna do a fire rescue station update. We'll do that next week. So we're moving on. 2018 Town Default Budget Review.
It should be the town budget and default budget. So just for information for the board, the couple of budgets that we looked at last week that we needed to adjust for the increases, that's all been done. Kim worked with the highway department and the police department, so those budgets are all set.
So I'm sorry, so it's 2018 budget spreadsheet with default?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so you guys got together, we now have the official default.
Yes.
Which is... 2018 default, column F, scrolling down.
The differential between the 2018 proposed budget and the 2018 default budget. Which is on the very last line, on the very last page.
All right, so the 2018 default budget is 3.3, 6.8? Difference is 168?
No, the difference between the 2018 proposed budget and the default is 34,223, of which the default budget is higher.
Okay, I see. All right, now, when last we met, we had a couple of concerns with just how the, I believe it was PD and Highway were written up, and those have since been balanced out. So it was just errors. I don't know if we have those department heads here, I don't know if you wanna talk to those quickly, or Mike, did you wanna share anything with us? We don't have to go through every line item, but...
Yeah, there's really not much to share on my end. Highway, you can see that the increase in pay, I didn't increase the salary line, so to offset that, we decreased the paving item, and came out with the bottom line is still the same. Everybody on board with that? I see everybody looking at the screens.
Yeah, so the salary part was just because new salaries didn't carry over, was that it?
Well, the increase of...
Wasn't reflected?
The pay increase didn't reflect that on this year's budget.
Okay.
And that was the only change, but we still, the bottom line highway budget hasn't changed, it's still the same.
Excellent, so you're comfortable with going forward with this, then?
Yeah, yeah, we should be fine.
Awesome. All right, thank you. And Chief Jewett, any thing to add other than what we've already talked about? No? Excellent. And what was the issues we had to, I know we had a salary issue that wasn't reflected, but what was the police, it was a similar thing?
Same thing, yes.
Same thing? Yeah. So it was, for those watching at home, it was salary increases that I think that hit in November, right?
Right.
In November, we had to carry those forward into 2018, so...
And just for clarification, we put some money in the facility line, so it wouldn't be a zero, and we came out with the same bottom line number, so we're fine with that.
So, and while we have you here, and we appreciate, the big four, I like to call them, are all here, the big four departments, so fire department, I think no changes, right? I think that we, since last we met with you, so you're good with that? And transfer station, same? All right, excellent. So those are our big four. So, anybody on the board have anything else to add? The good news is, as we did last year, and we were successful, we have a proposed under Anyone?
No.
I'll make a motion that we...
Uh-uh. This is for the next meeting, the public hearing, right?
Right.
So this is for the board's preview, I don't think we have to vote on this tonight.
We don't have to vote to bring this to the public hearing?
No, 'cause it'll be in the public, unless you feel you should, then...
I don't think it'd harm anything, but I think the main thing is that we're all ahead nod saying that next week at the public hearing, we're comfortable with presenting this and voting on this, so...
And the warrant articles get recommended or not recommended at that meeting next week as well?
We'll do those next, so this just saves a lot of time before we do that. So before we leave the topic of the overall budget, any, speak now or forever hold your peace, is what they say? We're all good?
Yep.
Good.
All right, so we're gonna leave the budget, and should anybody else have, in the audience wanna add anything on the budget? Otherwise, we're gonna send it to print, so to speak, and we'll vote on it next Monday night, weather permitting. All right, so, we're looking at the warrant articles?
So, we got some opinions from town council, as well as from NHMA, and we put the wording in here. If anybody sees anything in here that you don't agree with or wanna talk about, certainly we can do that.
I would just propose, based on advice from town council, specific to proposed warrant article eight, 13, and 14, essentially what the three warrant articles are doing are the same, they're doing the same sort of thing, they have, they basically have the same goal. Eight would basically allow the board to sell, to allow the selectmen to acquire and sell land, land buildings or both, without going before the legislature, which would be the town. So that's eight. So eight would essentially be a, if you will, a policy change. 13 is specific to listing the old fire station, or soon-to-be-old fire station, and 14 would be listing the old police station. So, two concerns I've, I had in town council backed us up on it, with 14, because it's a tax-deeding situation, I had this three-year thing echoing in my head, and town council basically said, that's correct, that the deed holder, the original deed holder, does have three years to make good on their tax bill. So, 14, at the very best, 14 would be getting out way ahead of that three years, at the worst, I think it would confuse people. 13, being the fire station, I think would also just confuse people. I just, being through a few of these now, I think people are going to talk before we vote, when they look at the warrant, and when they actually sit down to vote, they're gonna say, why are they asking me eight if they're asking me 13 and 14? And we might have a situation where one of them passes and the other two don't, or vice versa. So, my proposal is, we stick with eight, and we get rid of 13 and 14.
It's logical.
I agree, neither property is, will hurt anything by the town holding on to it, other than not getting any tax revenue for sales. But to keep things clear, they can go on the warrant next year.
Right. If even need be, if eight passes, they might, or at least with the fire station, might not have to.
So if eight passes, then they would no longer be necessary, and if it doesn't pass, then they can go on the warrant next year.
And I think when it comes to the old fire station, the, it's a year ago, time flies, but a year ago, when we're all in here doing the proposal for the whole project, it was an understanding that it would take probably a whole 'nother year to see this on a warrant, so this would be earlier than people would expect on a warrant anyway, I think.
Yeah, I'm good with keeping just eight, get rid of 13 and 14.
Anybody else? Just on those? Everybody's cool with...
Yeah, I still can't find mine.
So that was primarily town council's feedback, right?
Main folder.
Yes. And they read, they read the whole warrant, they didn't have feedback on any of the others?
I only sent them the ones that were new, because the ones that have been approved by DRA, I didn't send them those. But I told them this was the biggest concern that I had.
So the, just speaking about the new ones, and we don't have to read every line, but the fire department funds?
Go back. What? Go back.
Just minimize it, minimize.
So like there...
One changing to capital five and six?
I think number four.
Oh, four.
Yes.
Four is the uniform fire watch revolving calendar, whatever, that...
Are you on the revised warrant articles?
The draft warrant articles?
I put it on there under tonight's meeting as the revised warrant article, 'cause numbers have been moved around.
I'm looking at 2018 revised town warrant.
Yep.
And it still has Article four of, oh no, that's reason appropriate, 12,000.
Yep.
That's what we expected to be.
That's the correct warrant.
Okay.
All right, so, so now we're number five for the uniform fire watch details. So, you guys, you guys talked to DRA, I guess, you got some better wording of it, or...
Kim talked to the New Hampshire Municipal Attorneys. We're concerned that it's a little bit wordy, but, you know, we don't wanna give the wrong impression that we're gonna be charging fees, the fire department will be charging fees to all the residents.
Yep.
But it does talk about the fees, and the fees that is related to this is the fee schedule that the fire department had approved by the board, I don't know, last year or the year before?
Offspring, 2017.
Okay. So, you know, we kinda agreed with their wording, but didn't agree with some of it, and we didn't know if you guys think that it might be something that you might wanna just, you know...
So, I mean, other than a lot of words, it doesn't bother me too much, but it's not the first time we've had a warrant article this long.
No. No, you usually to establish it, you really have to tell what it's gonna do for us, because otherwise, in the future, you're gonna look back and...
Get in trouble.
Yeah.
Yep.
What does this article mean? So that's why it's a little wordy, but I think if we explain that at the public hearing and at the deliberative session, it's not gonna cost the taxpayers anything unless you have a penalty assessed against you for some hazardous waste thing, or, you know...
Okay.
If I may...
Kim, we have to have you, just so the folks at home can hear you. We have millions of viewers who are hanging on every word.
Excellent. When I reached out to legal services up at NHMA, the response that I got with the proposed draft article, he said that the language in both, the uniformed fire watch detail, as well as the next one, the unanticipated incident deemed hazardous, he said they are in proper form. He also recommended that we include a definition, a very short definition of what each one actually means, which is included, but then all the other verbiage we have to include because you wanna show that any fees that are collected according to what the board voted in August will be deposited into this account, and the expenses incurred are not coming out of taxpayers' money, it's coming out of an individual, is that correct, Chief? The situation? And the funds are gonna be allowed to accumulate from year to year to year, it's not part of the town's general fund. So again, it is wordy, but I think that we have the definition, we've got the go-ahead from legal counsel up at NHMA, but just not sure if there was anything, any questions that you had, or anything that you wanted to see changed.
I believe we definitely need the definitions in here.
Yep.
Very brief, but I'm sure most people will read that and go, what on earth is a uniformed fire watch detail?
The, I mentioned it last time, too, not everybody was at that meeting, but it would behoove us to have a voter's guide this year put together, so people can click on a link on the website and pull it up, and, you know, a little more, you know, plain English.
You mean with an explanation?
Explanation, yeah.
Okay.
'Cause, as we've said already, we have to go with certain language, so we don't get into trouble later, but that certain language might not mean a lot to people, but plain language, like a sheet of paper they can print out, or a couple sheets of paper, would, I think, go a long way to success, if that's what we're striving for. These are always kinda funny, because the bolded language that said, says this article would result in no increase in the amount of, in the amount to be raised by taxes, is always to me like, that's a yes, there's no increase to my taxes.
Right.
But for some reason, a lot of these still get a lot of no's, so...
For the meeting next week, too, we'll do the calculations on what the dollar amount ones are, so it'll be on the printed warrant for you next week to vote on.
So those were two new ones for the fire details and revolving fund stuff, and there was Keno.
Yep.
Keno is pretty straightforward, I wouldn't wanna touch it.
I think that's prescribed language.
Yep, it is in the RSA, yep.
Seventeen, I had a recommendation to change to dispose of to deliver. And I don't have a problem with that.
So totally removing disposed, how we go from five to...
No, it would be to allow commercial haulers to deliver household waste and recyclables
generated by Newton residents to the transfer station. Sort of the same thing, but the idea was dispose of might give some people the idea that there's additional, whereas it's just they're delivering it, it's not more waste being generated.
Sounds okay to me.
Would it be to deliver of household?
No, no, so it's to allow commercial haulers to deliver household waste and recyclables generated by Newton residents to the transfer station. So we're changing dispose of to the word deliver, and we're changing at to the word to.
Everybody's good with that, right? Just some grammar changes. Eighteen, there wasn't any feedback on that as we edited that, that's the petitioned article anyway, but...
The petition came in on Monday, and I think there was like 100 signatures on it.
Yeah.
The town clerk's office is reviewing the signatures to make sure we have at least 25 legal registered voters, so I'm pretty sure that'll be fine.
But the wording was not, there were no issues?
No, he was fine with it, he said it didn't change the intent, and he typed it right up and did the petition.
Excellent, so the only other one I was looking for here that's, the lifeguards, I talked with the rec. chair, and he does have a sort of, the thought behind the 12K, he'll be able to bring that forward, so people know how he arrived at 12K.
Okay.
It's not, in other words, it's not an arbitrary number, from what I'm told, so...
And the solid waste budget one, number nine, that's going in again this year. You're all set with that one, right?
That's just a cut and paste, right?
Well, we didn't do it last year.
But we did it the year before? So if my calculations are correct, we're gonna have 16 warrant articles?
Should be seventeen, oh no, sixteen, we took out two. Yep.
It's a five-pager, probably?
There was one that the fire chief gave me today, it's listed on your shared, I didn't put it on the warrant, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood what it meant.
I forwarded it to her.
It's up for this year, sir.
Not for this year?
You can have it on this year if you want.
Today's the last day, so if you want the board to review it, we still have time.
I have no problem, the board wants to...
That's it?
I can explain that.
No, Mr. Algodino wants to put it on.
Well, I can explain it.
I thought that's why you sent it to me, I said I'll send it to Nancy to find out.
Today's the last day, so...
Otherwise, you're like way ahead of...
Next year.
Next year, which we admire that, but that's way...
Well, if it could be put on, there's no cost.
Well, I want the board to read it, make sure they understand.
There's no cost.
Which one is it on?
Called Larry Warren.
Larry?
There's a typo on there though.
Oh, my name...
Well, that's what we're wondering.
I wouldn't call it Larry Warren article when we ask people to vote, 'cause that'll probably be...
It came in so late that I just put it out there like that.
I'm joking.
Okay.
So is there, do you think there's a typo on the...
Oh yeah, there's several, I hope so.
Yeah, first offense...
Yep, offense is one.
Your face please, just cut and paste and send to the board.
Well, you're saying first offense 100, second offense 500, third offense $70.
That's what we're questioning.
Mission is zero.
So what happens on the fifth offense?
Shouldn't be one after that.
Hopefully, it shouldn't get there.
What happens on the sixth?
But don't we have that already?
No, we have nothing.
What do we charge the...
You have your inspection due list already.
When it came in four times.
Nothing.
So, I'm gonna read this out loud, so people know what we're talking about, and also, I'd also like to get the police chief's opinion of it, 'cause essentially, it's, we're creating a law, right, in the town?
It's actually following suit with several other departments that has, say, a department that a lot of that wording came from, that's been in the news lately.
Oh, okay.
Or other fees, that's where that came from, I didn't realize we were gonna be discussing this.
So...
We don't have to, if you don't want to.
If you put in...
Today's the last day.
I'll be honest with the board, we've been out to several...
So the horse is out of the barn, so I'm gonna read it before you start talking, just so everybody knows. So, "To see if the town will vote, as proposed by the Board of Selectmen and the Fire Chief, the following commercial false fire alarm fees. First offense, no charge, a $100 charge will be assessed for the second offense, and a $500 fee assessed for the third offense, and a $70 fee assessed for fourth offense."
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred fifty.
Missing a zero.
Yeah, seven, I was like, wow, I'll do the fourth, that's only 70 bucks. "The purpose of said fees is to ensure that all proper repairs are made per code, and not to burden the taxpayer for fire department's response to faulty commercial fire alarms systems, period." So...
Correct. The reason that was put in, for example, this past month, we went to a commercial building on Route 108, coldest nights, went there back-to-back, three times. We cleared the scene, the second time, we cleared the scene, by the time we made it back to the station, we'd be in dispatch to go back out, and that particular time costs, well, other than the manpower, the apparatus, one of the fire apparatus actually froze up, the air brakes froze up, which we almost had to have the apparatus towed from the scene for a faulty smoke detector that the property owner didn't wanna fix. That's just one example. We've been, the last fire watch was done, was another commercial building on 108, we went there four times, within less than 24 hours. It is my opinion that it shouldn't be up to the taxpayers to fund a property owner's neglect of, you know, of maintaining their fire alarm system. It puts wear and tear on the apparatus, it's, money's coming out of the fire department's budget, and it's hitting the taxpayers. And I can tell you from another position, we had fees that were twice as much as that. And yes, the first one, second one, okay, the language that we had in our other department, act of God, it wasn't, but I can tell you, the ones, back-to-back, commercial buildings on 108, they were malicious. One was malicious, somebody running around pulling pool stations and tripping smoke detectors, and that hasn't been rectified yet. And the other one was just a cold faulty detector, they don't, they're not maintaining the building, there's no heat, and it keeps on tripping. And in my opinion, it's not right that the taxpayers are paying for them. And in my opinion, it's not right that the taxpayers are paying for them.
Is this a 24 or 48-hour timeframe?
There is no timeframe. If we go there at 8:00 in the morning for the first false alarm, it's not there. If we go there at 9:00, it's considered a second alarm.
Right.
We didn't put no times. We followed suit with other departments. There was no 24-hour. It's one calendar year, though.
So it's a calendar year?
It's a calendar year.
So we should put that?
It's a calendar year.
The other thing that I would recommend is you're giving them up to four offenses at a fee. And then any offense after that, no fee.
Well, if the other article passes, that's when we'll do the fire watch. That's when we'll put a firefighter standing, basically standing guard at the building, because we're gonna shut the fire alarm system down. That's hence what we did at one of the buildings on 108, that we kept going back repeatedly. We put, since it was a large commercial building, we actually put two firefighters on duty in that building.
All right, so let's assume the other article doesn't pass. Would you not want to have additional fees for any subsequent offenses?
The only difference between the other article and what's happening now, when we do a fire watch, or we've had two hazmat incidents in town, the cost to mitigate those incidents comes out of the fire department's budget. All the supplies, everything came out of the fire department's budget. When we recovered any monies, it went back to the town, into the general fund. Those two articles are for it to stay as a revolving fund for the fire department. So if I spent $1,000 to buy hazardous materials, booms, brushes, sand, speedy dry, et cetera, it doesn't have to come out of my budget. It's gonna come out of that account.
Right. I think what she's getting at, Chief, is you've got it up to four offenses. Now, what happens on the fifth one? There's no, should there be something in there saying every, after the $700 one, every subsequent call could be another $700 fine?
Or a thousand.
Or discretion of the chief.
Yeah, it could be. I don't have, I've never seen it go more than four, especially when they're told you're gonna have a fire watch, X amount of dollars for the vehicle, X amount of dollars. It usually, like it did on 108, usually wakes up the homeowner, I'm sorry, the property owner. I have no problem adding on the fifth one, a fire watch shall be present or up to the discretion of the fire chief or his or her designee. That way, if the fire chief's not there, a deputy or a captain can make the call for a fire watch.
So let me.
I'm using, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm just using as an example, let's say it only happens once a month. I mean, are you really gonna establish a fire watch for a false alarm once a month?
I can tell you, when we went out at minus 10 degrees, and that truck sat on 108, and the dollar signs are going through the head on the third false alarm.
But that was the third false alarm in what period of time?
That was the third false alarm in probably 36 hours.
Exactly, which is a different scenario.
Well, that's why we said 12 months.
Exactly, but if, so if you're getting four false alarms in the same day, you're likely to establish a fire watch. But what if you're getting a false alarm once a month, every month, one day? You go out, you deal with the false alarm. Next month, you go out again, you deal with the false alarm. After the fourth false alarm, the fourth month, on the fifth month, are you going to establish a fire watch?
You're gonna, because those four months just cost the taxpayers. And I can't give you a number, because we could have 10 members at $250 an hour, or we could have 20 members at $500 an hour, plus the apparatus, plus the liability. If you are the property owner of a commercial building, you're required by code to maintain your building, your fire alarm system. Again, it goes back to the same thing. I think after the first one, nobody does.
The board can approve.
But after the second one, and they start realizing, well, if we come back again within a calendar year, January to December, or this would be March, whenever this gets approved, from that point on, usually after the second and third, they're okay, unless you have, you're right. Unless you have a property owner like we had, that... There's differences. One had residents, had, I think, 10 apartments in it. One was an abandoned commercial building. So the commercial building, we didn't do the fire watch, but the one that had the residents, people living in it, which is a life safety issue, we did the fire watch.
Okay, so the building that you didn't do the fire watch on because it was abandoned?
Well.
You would still want to be able to charge them for each additional offense?
Correct. They fixed, we, after they were told that if we come back, they were gonna be fined, or we're gonna do a fire watch, we never went back. Plus, the key holder didn't want to go back either, because every time we go out, we call the key holder, and the key holder was getting tired of coming out in the freezing cold.
Let me, just a quick one, and then over to you. This says "commercial."
Correct.
Is, you know, for rental apartments aren't covered under "commercial," right?
Yeah, "commercial."
We go by the town.
Yeah.
In another.
Whatever the town said.
In my old job, it was a fee for residential.
Yeah.
It was a fee for "commercial."
Right.
We really don't have too much issues with the residential fire alarm system. For some reason, homeowners are maintaining them. It's the commercial property. I look at it as, and maybe somebody looks at it different, if the town deems a building "commercial," then it would fall under this. If it's deemed residential, then it does not.
Yeah.
That's why it's specific to "commercial."
I do think there's a difference.
The commercial was tossed in, I'm the one that tossed in the "commercial." So if there was a problem with the word "commercial," that was me.
Yeah.
Where that article came from, it was for anybody. That was for a resident, et cetera, et cetera. I don't, we shouldn't do residencies. We should just do the commercial properties. Because, like I said, residents are a little different.
Right. Nancy, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I'm just curious if you have fire codes that allows you to charge a fee like this? Because you know if the people vote "no," that may stop you any other way that you can do penalties. I'm not sure.
I, that, like I said, I cut and paste that.
Is it in the codes that allows you to charge penalty fees?
There's a lot in the code that will give us the right to do certain things.
That's my whole point.
That have, that was taken, like I said, there are several departments in New Hampshire that that came out of, with the exception of the wording "commercial."
Why does it have to be the townspeople? If you're only doing "commercial," why wouldn't you try and follow the state fire codes and not leave it up to the people to vote "no"? No means no, you can't charge anything.
The code only allows them to enforce the life safety codes, but it's up to the Board of Selectmen or the mayor or town manager to enforce a penalty fee for someone who lacks maintenance on their fire alarm system.
So would this be an ordinance, then?
However, the board feels that it should go through to allow him to charge the absentee.
It can't be an ordinance. It doesn't have to go.
Doesn't have to be an ordinance.
There's a lot of thing in the New Hampshire fire code that the Board of, the town fathers, Board of Selectmen, mayor, city council, however you want to do it, have to give the jurisdiction for the fire department to do inspections, certain things. Unlike other states, that it's law. Here, there's a big window. There's a big window.
Because that's what I was gonna say, like, we could make this an ordinance.
Which makes it even easier.
And do a public hearing and everything, and we don't have to have it on the warrant, right? Because we're essentially, like Larry just said, the state's already giving you the power to enforce. We're just establishing fees.
I may be wrong, but I think an ordinance has to go to a town meeting, and policy can be done by the board.
Or a policy.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just afraid if the people vote "no."
Right, but my major question right now is, and to be fair, the chief, you know, wasn't expecting this to happen tonight. But if we, you can already see we're picking apart the wording. If we do like a whole other, you know, three revisions of this, are we gonna have time?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as I get it by Thursday, I'll have everything ready for Monday's meeting.
So, I mean, I'll leave it up to the board. Do we want the chief to pursue this further to get it on the warrant? Or do we want to say, let's see what we can do?
I mean, along with saving the taxpayers money.
Oh, I understand that, but when people read this, they're not, they're immediately going, oh, they're gonna penalize me, and they're gonna vote "no."
Real kind of house explained.
All the fire department articles, the other two do not affect the taxpayers. It actually helps out the taxpayers, so if the taxpayers vote "no" on it, then it in turn doesn't benefit the taxpayers, because the taxpayers are gonna pay for somebody else's neglect.
I get it, but I don't know if they will.
I, I mean, my gut feeling personally is let's not put this in this year's warrant, and let's see if we can pursue it as just a policy or an ordinance, whatever we have to do. And then we'll learn what we can do. If we can do it, we'll just do it. If not, who's ever here next year? We can, you know, put it on next year's warrant. So that's what I would do. I don't know. What does everybody else think?
I'm good with it.
Good with?
Trying to do it as a policy?
Yeah. Jim?
The false alarms are coming from smoke detectors or fire detectors?
They're almost, technically, they're the same. The false alarms on one building were coming from smokes and pool stations, which that was somebody, one of the residents that was a little upset with somebody, deciding to have fun with the rest of the tenants, because it was a full fire alarm system. They were pulling the fire alarms, or they were hitting the test button on the smokes, smoke detectors. On the commercial building, it was the smoke detectors that were activated. But the whole system is considered a fire alarm system, which is the panel, the horns, the strobes, the pool station.
All right, so are we good with asking the chief just to work with Nancy a little hallmark to see if we can do this as a policy? And then if that doesn't work out next year? Good? All right?
I'm good.
Everybody's happy?
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
I thought you knew it was on, sorry.
All right, so. All right, are we, are we of the opinion we have the proposed budget and the warrant articles as proposed, ready to go for the public hearing next week?
Do you want to change any of the warrant articles around, or are you okay with the order they're in?
I like the order.
Okay.
Everybody good?
Okay.
So we'll, we'll let these guys work on that, and we can leave that topic for the meeting. Or leave that topic for this meeting. I will, Chief, just while we have you here, the truck, purchased truck, just give, and I'm timing you. Give us a quick overview.
The board, Mr. Doggett voted to purchase the 2018 Chevy pickup truck. What we did was, I had the chairman sign a purchase and sales with a certain dealer. The delivery was supposed to be November 1st. As of last week, we talked to the dealer, sent numerous emails, never got back to me. Captain Zalinski finally, he talked to the captain. The truck hasn't even been ordered. The truck, they're not planning on ordering the truck, because according to that particular dealer, it's a municipal vehicle. That red, they need five of them. So what I did was, I contacted the dealer in Massachusetts. That was $500 less for the vehicle. He can order the truck as soon as there's a signature on there, that he has no idea what the red is. It's the exact same truck, just $500 less, and it will be here in nine weeks.
That's this one right there?
Correct.
Excuse me. So the original motion did not specify, or did not name a dealership, right?
Right.
Correct. It just specified the vehicle.
The motion's on your shared, in case.
Which is how it should be.
Right. So if I sign this, I don't even need a motion, right?
All we did was go to the New Hampshire dealer. That was all.
So I'm gonna sign this unless anybody has issue with that? You actually saved money, right?
Yeah.
This was lower, like 500 bucks?
Yeah. We tried staying in New Hampshire.
Yeah, yeah.
But unfortunately, unless the town's gonna order four more, he has no idea when that truck's gonna come in.
Can pretty much guarantee this town will not be ordering four more.
Oh, we need some highway trucks, right?
In red? You gotta get them in red, right?
Does it change the payment plan?
No. No. He's gonna get it, he's gonna get it to me if, and we have the amount already in the budget.
For what we?
So it won't change the budget.
Okay.
All right, so you're good. That's signed. You can pick that up right there. Thank you.
Only, do you have a, we have a copy of that, right? Not a signed copy. Chief, can you give us a signed copy tomorrow for files? Yeah, all right. We'll give it to you tomorrow.
All right, so anything else for this special meeting? I always love the special ones. They're, they're very special. But I think Ziggy's got something? Or did you, sometimes you guys just turn each other in like to mess with each other. I mean.
Bob Zalinski, longtime resident of Newton. Station 2, which is at the junction, has two trucks in it. It's actually owned by the church.
Right.
But there are some maintenance problems going on, and there's a heating problem, there's freezing pipes, there's no pressure coming from the dug, it's actually a point. So they're looking for, and now the roof's leaking. They're looking for a little relief off, we can go half and half on some repairs, or how would we handle it?
Chief, what's that? The, I think we need numbers, and then this wouldn't be the first time we've kind of been approached to kind of coordinate, or not coordinate, but work together on some sort of fix over there.
I mean, even though they charge us high rent, I have no problem working with them.
Do they charge rent?
Was it a dollar a year or something?
Yeah. Inflation, you know, it's like.
Like I say, it's leaking now, not too bad. We've got some buckets in place, but, you know, how do we get dialogue with them and you people to do a couple fixes?
We did the generator, right, Mike? That was the, so, so if you guys can work with them, approach them about getting some quotes, some numbers to bring, and the chief's pointing to the captain.
The reason the captain's up there, because the board is aware, Captain Zalinski brought it to me today and asked me, and I told him that, come on, me, you have to come and see. I actually left a message with Nancy, and he was told, come and see the board.
Yeah, yeah, so.
The guy said, oh, it needs oil, too.
Yeah, there is oil.
So if you can get some hard, like, facts and numbers for us, we'll talk about it further. Not saying yes, not saying no either, but we just need, need that data, and then we can probably work something out for the benefit, because it's gonna benefit the town, so, you know.
I think, since we did hear about it tonight.
Yes.
We haven't quite finalized or put a hard copy budget.
Yeah, you're talking about buildings and.
Yeah, I'm talking about putting an increase of 5,000 or 10,000, something that we, since we know something is coming up.
I mean, it needs a complete repainting. To get, to get in the door, you have to kick it. The building's settled in one corner. I'm not saying you have to shore up the building, but the door should be looked, you know, we can't even get a carpenter to take care of the door.
Once you start, you're kind of stuck with it.
But we've assisted, it's the same as the youth baseball, helping the town pay for some of the maintenance of the ball fields because they use it.
Usually if they.
We own the town. We own the fields. They use them.
Yes, but the ball field, the baseball association doesn't own it, and yet they do give us some funds to help with the maintenance. It's kind of like the church is doing the same thing. They're not charging this rent for being there. They could be, but they don't.
They could be, but they don't. So, this is really a cost of us remaining in that building.
So.
To change, to change numbers now is gonna be a lot of work, because there's a lot of things that have got to change, and it may change the default.
Maybe you'll turn over a couple more bays to the new fire station. Is that what you want? I mean, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I mean, Lisa, I, I think you have a point, however, we're, we're probably a little, although it's officially not too late, it kind of is too late. And right now, we don't have anything close to a ballpark number, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't really be able to seriously add or take away anything from the budget, because we just don't know, and, you know, who, who knows, it might just, it might be short money to do something that's gonna save us a lot in the long run. So, I, I think it is what it is. If, if you can get some facts and some numbers for us, get back on the agenda in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll, we'll try to work something out. Like I said, we've done, had to do stuff before to keep it functional for us over there, so if, if the numbers line up, I don't have a problem.
Maybe we can get some volunteers down.
Well, that's true, too. I, I think we essentially have the same thing with the generator. We had a, had a, I'll put it this way, we had a good deal from the guy who did the generator over there.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. All right. Jim, did you have something? You looked like you were about to say.
I did, but it really, that's how we get the numbers, things down.
Exactly, yeah. Anything else before we wrap it up here? So, our regular meeting is next Tuesday night. We have the public hearing the night before, weather permitting, right, on Monday. And, but we just had this meeting out here so we could wrap things up, so we're pretty confident what will be, what we saw tonight will be what we're voting on in the public hearing, and we'll go from there, so.
Mr. Chairman, is that a payroll manifest in front of you?
It is a payroll manifest, yes. Blocking, I blocked the view, so.
Matt?
Yep.
Does the board want to meet on, last year, you had the public hearing, and then the same night you met for your regular meeting. Do you want to do that next week like you did, or do you want two different nights?
So, when do we think the public hearing will be? How much time do you think?
I don't think it'll take that long, because we don't usually have a lot in attendance.
But we do read every warrant article.
That's the lengthiest part of the public hearing.
Yeah.
Right. So, what, what do you think, Diane, as far as the agenda for the next night? Do you think it's?
Well, you're gonna have all the stuff that you haven't done tonight, plus more, so.
I would, can we put it this way? Can we try? So, we'll try to get it all?
Would the manifest be ready on Monday, Kim, if we were to do Monday night?
Regular meeting down?
Yeah.
Okay, so you'd have your manifest and?
So, we're gonna start at 6:00 up here, right?
I think it's 7:00.
Public hearings are 7:00, but you could start the public meeting at 6:00.
Right, right.
And then, go at 7:00 o'clock, because some of this stuff is just housekeeping more than anything.
It's only 6:25, if we want to blow through the rest of the 20 tonight.
Yeah, the only, I was thinking of that, but the only thing is, it's stuff that I want to read. So, I don't want to read it on the spot.
We, we posted the public hearing at 7:00, and then 7:15, because the key knows first, and it shouldn't take long. So, if you wanted to start at 6:00, do the selectmen's, and if you have to stop to do the public hearing, you could recess your public meeting and go back into it. Right now, I don't think we anticipate a lot of stuff on it right now.
Right. If everybody's good with that, I think at 6:00 o'clock, we could start with the selectmen's meeting, standard stuff.
At 5:30.
And, and see how much we get done. And then, ideally, I guess we could still post for Tuesday night, but if we don't, if we get everything done, we just won't meet.
Okay. Post it for Tuesday in case they go in on Monday.
Regularly scheduled meetings, still keep the posting for it?
So.
But we'd have to post for Monday as well.
And then you could recess till Tuesday.
Yeah.
Just keep in mind that if it snows on Monday, the public hearing's on Tuesday.
Yeah. So, it's the same plan shifted, yeah.
Just shifts a bit.
Yeah. All right, so up here, we'll be up here at 6:00 then.
Right.
All right, everybody good?
Did you, did you want a motion to sign the payroll?
I was just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we sign the payroll, summary report for the pay period, 12/24/17, to 1/6/18, for the pay date of 1/11/18.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? And that, that should be it, right? Nothing else?
Move to adjourn.
What did?
Second.
What? Are you saying something?
No, just babbling.
Okay. So, we had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys very much.